Okay, good evening. We're going to call our Planning Commission meeting for September 17th to order. I am Chair Lene Turley-Treyho for all of our people in the audience. Hello. And we're going to have our flag salute by Fernando.
Stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Fernando. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chair Turley-Treyho.
Here.
All Commissioners are present.
Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
We have received none.
Okay. I will go ahead and read the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right. Number one, do I have a motion to approve Action Minutes from our last meeting of July 16th?
Move to approve July 16th, 2025 Action Minutes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second by Hegel and Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We'll go right to our public hearing. We have a-
We still have a second item on-
Yes. Yeah, we have a director's hearing summary report, so we need to also vote on that. We could have voted on both of them together.
Correct, but it's fine to do it separate.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the director's hearing summary report?
Motion. To approve.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion and a second by Solis and Hegel. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. All right. We'll move on now to the public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the item, prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. All right. So our first item in the public hearing is planning application number, oh, we've all turned green, PA 25-0207. A conditional use permit to allow for a California Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, Type 47, on sale, general eating place license for Temecula Korean BBQ Restaurant located at 401 925 Motor Car Parkway, Units G and H. Yenin?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, I'll be presenting Temecula Korean BBQ CUP Agenda Item Number Three, Planning Application Number PA 25-0207. This is a conditional use permit application for a full-service restaurant to obtain a Type 47 alcohol license. The project is located at 401 925 Motor Car Parkway, Units G and H, located within the Temecula Plaza Commercial Center. Before you is a floor plan and building frontage of the business. It is comprised of 2,100 square feet of floor area. Within the red markings are, is the indoor dining room and bar. The Type 47 will allow for spirit-based drinks on the menu to accompany the meals, authorizes the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the licensed premises. It is a full-service restaurant that specializes in grilled meats and seafood. Operating hours are 2:00 PM from 2:00 PM through 10:00 PM, seven days a week. ABC will process the public convenience or necessity. Conditions have been added to the conditional use permit that include full menu available at all hours that alcohol is served. Termination of alcohol sales shall be no less than one half hour prior to closing. This project is categorically exempt under Section 15301, Class 1, Existing Facilities. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve PA 25-0207, subject to the conditions of approval. The applicant has received the conditions of approval and agrees to adhere to them. This concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Yenin, I'm going to start on this end over here. Mark, any questions for staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just one or two. I made a couple of notes when I was, when I was looking at, at the matter before us, before, before it was before us. I had a question, something I didn't understand, and it does certainly, it applies to this application, but also to a broader term. So, yeah, I understand that ABC, the Alcoholic Beverage Control, Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, reserves the right to make the PCN, Public Convenience or Necessity, determination, but when I looked at, you know, the ABC's website, it seems like there's a, there's a fairly significant over-concentration of alcohol licenses in this census tract. I think it's 432.16. Unless I'm wrong, and I'm certainly willing to be corrected, I look forward to it if I'm wrong, but census tract is allowed to have four on sale, sorry, a maximum of seven on-sale licenses. So I guess that's a Type 47, isn't it? On-site consumption.
Yes.
Okay. So if they're allowed to have seven, and then we have an actual number of 73 active on-sale license, that's one, by my calculations, and math is not my strong suit, but that appears to be 1,043% of what's allowed. And the reason I ask that question is, I certainly don't have a problem with adult beverages, but it does seem like a, a bit of an over-concentration. Do we, do we know why that is or how that got that way?
Yes. So this is in Census Tract 432.16, and this location includes the Promenade Mall, which is the Temecula Regional Center Specific Plan Number Seven. And in this specific plan, full on-sale general alcohol is permitted by right, so most of the businesses that are there are permitted to have that alcohol, in which it turns out to be in that census tract, and it is intended to be the entertainment area of the city.
Okay. And, and I think I get that. I just, I'm curious how we reconcile or how we, if we reconcile it, but how too, if we're determined to do that. How do we reconcile apparent, you know, 1,043% of what's allowed? Do we run that by ABC? Do any of our plans or do any of our, it seems like there's a bit of a disconnect.
I'll jump in here real quick, if I may.
Thank you.
The whole thing with the, the number of, of licenses allowed, we need to go a couple of words further and say allowed before it's considered over-concentrated, and it's really potentially over-concentrated. What we then look at is, is this where we want these kinds of uses? And the mall definitely is where we want these kinds of uses. Paseo del Sol, for instance, probably isn't over-concentrated, but we don't want to start putting these kinds of things in the middle of the residential neighborhoods. So the idea with the ABC limits on licenses or, you know, considered, before being considered over-concentrated, is really kind of some guardrails that then causes you to go another step further to look at it and say, is there a public convenience or necessity? Why would you want to put these here? And, you know, being in the mall is a great reason why you'd want to put it there, because that's where you want your restaurants and all those different things. So the PCN or the, the ABC license thing isn't really an absolute that that's a number that's allowed. It's allowed before being considered potentially overly concentrated, and then you need to look further at, is this appropriate?
Is it an appropriate location? You said, got it. Thank you. Thanks for that. And then at, at the location, Temecula Korean BBQ, how, do we have any idea of what the number of police calls for service, if any, have been there?
Thank you. I did reach out to Officer Nunez to run a report within the last year, between now and the last year, and there's only been three calls onsite, and it wasn't specifically for the business. It's just Motor Car Parkway, and it consisted of a hit-and-run, a collision, and one burglary.
Doesn't even sound alcohol-related. Yeah, okay, good. Could, can I ask you, this will be my last one, could you, would you mind terribly pulling up that slide again that showed the plan, the floor plan?
Which slide? Which slide?
I should have noted that, a few further up, showing the, the plan view.
Oh, the floor plan?
Is, can you advance like the red that you had around that?
Yes.
I love that when you guys do that, yeah. So the space to the, by the bar there, to the left of that bar, what is that space intended for?
I, I spoke to the applicant, and that's an additional dining area. It just happens to have a divider wall, not to the ceiling. It's about three feet tall with, topped with plants, just for more privacy of that seating area, but it has a grill for grilling meats and seafood.
Okay. But those are like a, not a stem, but like a pony or something. That's not a full-height wall?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much for that presentation.
Yenin, on the, on the law enforcement stats, what's the burglary? Do you know if the burglary was an auto burglary or was it a commercial or residential? Do you know if they delineated that?
They did not.
Okay. I'm, I'm guessing probably an auto burglary, considering all the cars that are around that area, so, okay. Thank you.
Down here, Fernando?
Just one question. Back to the floor plan, that bar, is that a new bar or is that already existing because they have a different license?
That's existing. They currently serve wine and beer.
Ah, okay. That's it. That's my last question.
Bob?
My question's for the applicant, so I'll wait for the applicant.
Okay. Yeah, might as well, but I appreciate the questions from our colleagues, so good questions. And if we have no other questions for staff, correct? All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
So if you can just maybe give us a presentation or of why you are wanting this Type 47 and what kind of plans you have for that, and any kind of training, those kind of things that you're going to be doing, or just kind of give us a feel for why you're here.
Yeah. Well, we applied for a 47 license.
What is your name?
My name is Gary Choi.
Jerry Choi?
Gary Choi.
Oh, Gary. Okay.
Sorry. My name is Gary Choi, owner of Temecula Korean BBQ, and we applied for this Type 47 liquor license. And just to let you guys know, in the Riverside County, they only choose 20 applications every year. So, and for some reason, this year, we were chosen, so one out of the 20. And since 2001, since 2001 till 2022, around there, so that's about 20 years, there's only been 20, two Korean BBQ, two Korean restaurants actually in Temecula. So for 20 years, there's only two. And in the last three years, there's going to be five. One, two, three, four, possibly another one, six. New ones going to be opened up, so one, two, three, four, fifth one, fifth one, all within two miles of each other. Now, this restaurant had a 41, beer and wine, which is, which is nice. So we've noticed that when, when you open wine, you have about three days to sell that bottle before wine, if you guys know wine goes bad in three days. That's from what I've, I believe, okay. So in the last three years, now that there's more Korean, Korean restaurants, we've noticed that there's a conservative loss of sales, a lot. And I could actually tell you that in the last year of 2024, in the last quarter, I could actually tell you guys that there was actually no profit gains in that restaurant. It could have been because of two brand-new restaurants, so everyone wants to come there. And if you looked at the square footage of this restaurant, it's 2,100 square feet. Now, when the first, the restaurant first started, it wasn't meant to be all-you-can-eat restaurant, but because of the times now, I would say the most majority of the restaurant, what they do when you have an actual barbecue in front of you is, is all-you-can-eat. That's the most popular way. We've noticed that because before, we didn't do that, and the restaurant was slowing down, decreasing in sales. And so we decided to do all-you-can-eat, and sales were great. And then right down the street from us, about two miles, another Korean barbecue restaurant opened up. We have 66 seats. I believe they have 333 seats. Now, just like any other all-you-can-eat restaurant, like Golden Corral, Home Deep, Hometown Buffet, Soup Plantations, the name of the game for all-you-can-eat is turnover. Lot of tables full, lot of turnovers, that way you could process that. And in, in the restaurant that we're currently at right now, we have, we have 13 tables. So in my opinion, that's not a lot, 2,100 square feet. And we're like, okay, I mean, the restaurant's been there for over 20 years, and we're like, okay, so what else can we do to attract customers? The food is good, the service is good, but now there's four, five, five Korean restaurants, and we're just, we're trying to see what other options can we have? And we've noticed that the, the sale of spirits could be a definitely another alleyway, another possibility, another option that can help attract some. The population of Temecula is over, I want to say over 500,000 people, right? With Murrieta up next to us, we have Wildamar, and we only have 13 tables, 66 seats, and we're not able to turn a profit with 66 seats. It's, it's kind of hard. And we were trying to give the, give Temecula like the most, best reasonable price, meaning cutting our profits down compared to our competitors whose prices are 35, 45% more than us. So we're like, hey, we're going to give you the best deal in town. And even with that said and done, it's an all-you-can-eat restaurant. So I would say four, one out of five tables, we might not even turn a profit. There's people like me who, who can eat a lot. And, you know, if you guys know that everything, the price of, everything is going up, everything is going up. Every, every week when I go grocery shopping, when I go to San Marcos or Fullerton pick up food, the prices increase. We used to buy a box of broccoli for $13, and then, and sometimes it could go up to $30. I've seen zucchini, a box, a case of 30 zucchinis, that's usually $12, go up to $80 at the peak prime time. And it always does that with vegetables. It'll do that with meat, and then it'll do that with anything, anything inside times. And within the last three years, just recently, I just raised one of my, there's two options. One of them was $30.99, and we raised it $1. The other one, it was $20, $25.99, and we raised it to $1. That was in the last four years, we've only raised it $1. So we've cut our losses in profits, trying to just, just trying to breathe, just so that we don't sink. And we're like, our, 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 our hope, our dream is to say, hey, you know what, guys? What will distinguish us from the other Korean barbecue restaurants at this point is if we could have spirits. Now, with spirits, it opens up a whole new game, whole new territory. I don't, with spirits, we can, we can provide bourbon, whiskey, tequila, vodka. It could be novelty, it could be craft, it could be flights. We could talk about like, hey, what if we're able to not only make creations of drinks, but what if we're able to bring a whiskey that was 30 years old, that's been sitting in the barrel for 30 years? And we were able to join that with people who, who like whiskey, and they could have all-you-can-eat barbecue, and they could have a, a dram, an ounce or two, to go with that. It's like wine, but in a different category. Eventually, maybe we could even make some drinks. We've never, we've never, we've never, we never thought we would get this far, but we definitely can have access to the spirits. Tequila is probably the number-one selling spirit right now that I know of, and it's growing really popular. And for people, give, give our customers an option of like true tequila that people are not aware of, that has additive-free versus additives, bourbons that are very hard to come by, but yet if we're able to get access to that, we could join that with our, with our, with our, with our menu. ABC requires a responsible beverage serving, so our restaurant is small, we only have 13 tables, so we don't have a staff of 30 people to run 13 tables. We, we only have a staff of maybe no more than 10. We've noticed that actually trying to open during lunchtime is really difficult because of where our, where our building is. We've asked our, we asked our landlord to see if there's anything we can do, because on a Friday afternoon, you would not be able to find any parking space in our place, even though we put up signs saying, hey, this is for, this is for customers of the building. And we talked to my landlord, and landlord says, by law, we cannot tow them. And there's all, I would say 80% of the cars there are from the dealerships. We have, we have four, no, we have GMC, or cars on, Hyundai, we have Nissan, we have, we're just surrounded by car dealerships, and everyone there, 80% of them are the dealers parking our parking lot. That's another, that, that's another reason why, you know, it's hard for our customers to go to the restaurant. So we're just like saying, what, what we're hoping is that maybe if we, we could add some spirits, like all majority of other restaurants, it's going to help us try to survive another year. And, and, and ABC requires for us to have everyone, any, any server serving liquor would have to have that certificate. And that responsible beverage serving will, will, will tell each one of us servers to like, have them or have them. And like, no more, no more drinks, no happy hour after 8 o'clock, no drinks 30 minutes or even an hour before we're closing, trying to see the sentence of intoxication, how to check the ID for proper age, 21s. And that's what, that's what, that's what the dream is, guys. That's what the dream is, not to, not to make a million dollars, but just to survive, guys.
Thank you. Okay. We'll, we'll probably have some questions for you, so if you can just hang tight, that'd be great. I'm going to start at this end. Fernando?
No questions.
No questions. Bob?
So you've been in this location 20 years?
So actually, my mother was actually there for, since 2001, and then 2001, and then I want to say about, after working for her for 15 years now, she finally retired after my father passed away.
Okay. But that, that restaurant's been there?
Same location.
Okay. My question's of just about security related to the building and cameras. Do you have an alarm system?
So we do have, no alarm systems, just cameras inside the restaurant.
You do have cameras?
We do have cameras.
Okay. Do you have a camera that would display for you the bar area where you keep the alcohol?
Definitely.
Okay. That's it.
Gary?
Not so many words, but I kind of heard you say that you need to be competitive, and this is a route that you need to do to, to achieve that goal. I'm just curious if you know of the other Korean restaurants in town, if they have this type of a license to dispense spirits?
That I know of, they do not. They do not have a 47 license.
Okay. The, the problem that we continue to face every time we, we deal with one of these is, at least I get the argument that I need to be competitive, and I need to stay with my competition in so sense, if they're doing cocktails, et cetera, then I need to be doing that too. And then that just leads to the oversaturation issue that my companion here talked about earlier. So that's one thing we wrestle with constantly. I certainly am receptive to a business owner's needs and the need to stay competitive, especially now, especially after the last five years where, you know, things just weren't great. And, and I must say that it's somewhat surprising now when I go to a restaurant and see how much the prices really have risen in such a short amount of time. But I get it, and, and I'm certainly receptive to the business owner's needs to stay competitive and to make a profit. We, I think as a city, want to make sure that our business community thrives and succeeds. So I'm, I'm just, I was just curious of your opinion or your statement on, on why you felt you needed to go for this type of a license?
Well, more not of a need, it was a hope for us in the beginning, because we did apply for this license a couple of times, and because there's over 160 applications, and if you only choose 20, 20 out of 160, we, it was ridiculous. What was even more funny was in 2001, when my mom started, she actually got this conditional use permit. She was approved for this, but she didn't know what, what tool that was, so she let it go. Now, when I say competitive, what I mean to say is even on a Friday night, let's say we get full, we have 13 tables. Now, if you look at the profit margin of 20, let's say 20%, 20% of 13 tables is, and we try and turn that around twice, it's, it's still hard because of the amount of work it takes to run a all-you-can-eat. It's not just we're cooking some- work it takes to run a all-you-can-eat. It's not just we're cooking some pasta for a table. We're talking about hundreds of pounds of meat going out in a week. And for us to sustain that, Mr., Mr. Gary is, um, just to be frank with you, the profit in spirits is substantial compared to anything else, compared to food itself. We're talking about twenty percent off of the twen- thirty dollars, which is six dollars. When if you buy an Old Fashioned, that one drink itself will equal out the same amount of profit that you just spent two hours feeding this person with short rib, brisket, pork belly, beef chuck roll, squid. And so in seven, seven items total, and not including the eight side dishes that we have. That's what we're hoping for. We're hoping that, hey, to help alleviate the costs that it takes for us. Once again, a, a, a restaurant, like competitors, they're, they're like sixty, six seats versus three hundred seats. Though, though, the, the, the new one that's coming out right now, they take over the re- old, old Chinese restaurant, Chin's off of Jefferson. Last time I was in there, they had over two hundred seats too.
Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions. First of all, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate your answers, very forthright. Couple of questions. Have you ever had, uh, has you ever had a licensing violation from the ABC?
No, we have not.
You have not?
No violations.
And then I wanna get a, just a little bit better understanding. I'm familiar with the RBS, the Responsible Beverage Service, uh, you know, require, I think that's a mandatory training component from, uh, ABC. How, how do you envision it working? Are you gonna have a bartender there that is preparing drinks? Or will servers prepare drinks? Or how do you see that happening?
In the meantime, our plan is to have two drinks that are created. And our, our, our plan right now is to, to provide like pours of like one ounce drinks of, of bourbon or whiskey or, or at, at, at the time being. And then what we would like to eventually do is since this is something new to us, hopefully, hopefully start creating drinks. Hopefully get a bart- bartender that's the envisioned, but at the, at, at the time being right now, we're still, we still have not, we still have not created a bar menu yet. Right now, what I'm trying to say is, even though we have a liquor license, nothing is finite until we know that we were able to get a conditional use permit. Without this conditional use permit, that liquor license is, is, has no value in it whatsoever. If we were able to get the conditional use permit and we're able to now get the green light, this is when we would have to start shopping for our spirits. And then this is a time when we would have to create a menu. And we have not done that yet. We have not done that yet. We have, this process has taken over nine months for us, for this conditional use permit.
Sure.
And, um, we, we, nothing is finite, but that's, the plan is to, yes, our plan is to, to get a bartender. Our plan is to be able to have our five servers to know where each section of our, 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 our spirits are. And using our jigger to pour out one ounces. We, we want, we just wanna do one ounce to sample all the different varieties that we are hoping that we can obtain.
Sure. Do, do you contemplate the servers themselves pouring out that jigger, dram or, or shot? Or do you, from the outset, or say the grant of your forty-seven and your CUP, do you ha- do you plan to have, have you contemplated having a bartender before then? Or will servers be actually preparing the drinks?
Our plan is, my plan is that each bottle that we have in the restaurant will be labeled clearly to know which number on the menu, on our bar menu. And if number three they order matches number three on the bottle, then we would like to be able to have, teach our servers that to pour an ounce into the jigger and to present it into the appropriate glass to be served to the table. The reason why I would think that we would need a bartender was if we would be making specialty drinks. Whether it's Old Fashioneds, martinis, or anything like that.
I, I, I think I, I, I think I see where you're going with this. I just wanna be sure I have the fullest understanding. So, uh, if your servers, if I understand what you're saying, are, are your servers would actually, I guess, dispense it from a bottle in, into a drink? You, you, if you don't have a bar, in the absence of a bartender, i- is that my correct? Do they receive any special training for doing that? Cause that's essentially bartending work, is it not?
Well, I would say the difference between a bartender and a pers- bartender, in my opinion, would be someone that's, a customer that sits down and they order, let's say, a Nob Creek eighteen. And the bartender will actually have information about the distillery from Kentucky from Nob Creek, telling them which, which, which barrels they use. Since it's bourbon, it would have to be brand-new American, American, American barrels charred, stored in Kentucky. They would be able to present all that information that's, that makes that Nob Creek different from, from, uh, Eagle Rare versus Buffalo Trace.
I, I, I think I, I get that part where, where they'll have probably a, a more in-depth or substantive knowledge of the product. I'm concerned, I guess where you can probably see where I'm going with this, and I just wanna, uh, be certain I understand that, that in the interim, if you, you, you said you would be planning to get a bartender, but I think you also said servers would go up and match the label or the, you know, number three to number three, that kinda thing. But they would be preparing drinks?
Pouring, pouring an ounce.
Okay.
Pouring an ounce. I would hope that my servers would be able to pour an ounce from a bottle and to dispense that into a glass.
Sure, sure, I understand. Okay, uh, those are all my questions. Thank you for your answers.
Okay, I do have a few questions. Um, so when I first looked at this application, my big, my biggest concern is that there's a liquor store like two doors down. It's not very many liquor stores in Temecula, like they're not allowed anymore. So that one must have be, have been here a long time to still be there. And so I think it's called Michael's Liquor Store. So that's a concern of mine that that's right there. And I just, going along with what, um, Mr. Watson was asking, what is the age of your servers in your?
So I have a first server named Mike. He's been with me for over twelve years and he's, he would be over forty. I have my second server, Tim. He's been with me for over four years and he too is over thirty, or at thirty. I have Seth, who's been with me for three years. He's around thirty. And I have, those are the three that, that were with me. Now, as far as servers go, because in the, in, in, in the Korean barbecue restaurant, all we're doing is we're just grabbing the meats or the vegetables that was prepared by my chef and we bring it to the table. So we're not literally, we're just delivering the meats. So with thirteen tables, we were able to run with four servers. We did have, we, we did hire a couple more and, um, so with that, um, and actually, my mo- my mom, she does, she does help too. She does help. Uh, that's four. Uh, another one would be, um, Adolfo, he's been with me for eight years. He's over, he's turning forty. Those are my f- five cores that's been with me for three-plus years.
Yeah. So, yeah, that, that is a concern of the age of the servers. So obviously that's not an issue here. But if you were to hire any new servers and the, and those servers were responsible for, for, um, pouring alcohol or delivering it.
Right.
That, you know, that would be-
I probably wouldn't have any new one, anyone with that because the difference between, let's say, number three and four, that bottle could be eighty dollars versus eight hundred dollar bottle. So I think it would just stick with my core.
Yeah. Um, okay. So regarding the liquor store that's close by, one of the, um, under this, under the conditions of approval, is that there's no advertising of alcohol on the outside of your building. That would be really important to me. And also that there's, that it, that on the menu, um, there's an over-service statement on there. And also there's an over-service sign in your restaurant, certain size that needs to be posted on the main entrance.
Right.
So anyway, just because there's liquor close by as well, a liquor store, not just a restaurant, I, you know, I appreciate you being so honest about what you are wanting and needing for your restaurant. I understand that. It's just, for me, it's the, the, um, the availability of liquor so close by to you and then to have that liquor also in your restaurant. So all of your staff and your servers would be trained, obviously.
Right.
And just want you to be aware of our concerns.
Right.
You know, um, we, we want you to be successful, of course, as Gary was stating. It's just at, at what cost, right? We don't want to see people over-served and having more issues there with liquor. So, um, that is my concern. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
I just have one more. Gary, um, how many years have you had your beer and wine licenses? Appro- approximately?
So the restaurant has been there for twenty-two years. We've had that continuously and never stopped since two thousand and one. I've been there, we were officially, we changed names.
Okay.
My mom, she retired and, um, I took over like, I would say officially last year, July. But it, since July, but since two thousand and one, we've always had, that building has always had that forty-one.
So you've had about twenty-one years of a successful beer and wine license? Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, just one last question. I don't know if you can answer this. I'm just, and I'm just a brief answer. So you said that ABC had over a hundred and eighty applicants from Riverside County? Is that what that is?
Riverside County.
And only twenty are approved?
Every year.
I feel like they're all approved for years. I don't know. Like, that's crazy. Okay.
Only twenty.
Only twenty. Okay. All right. That was my question. All right. Any other questions? Go.
This is for staff. Um, yeah. For an individual to actually pour, not serve, but pour, what, what requirement is there? I gather there would be an age requirement? And then is there a licensing requirement? Like a bartender's type license or what would be required of that?
So in the conditions of approval, condition ten C one, which is Responsible Beverage Service Training. So it states that every alcohol manager and every alcohol server shall obtain and maintain a current Responsible Beverage Service Training Course certifit- cer- certification as required by the Business and Professions Code Section. So you're not gonna be able to receive that if you're not old enough to serve the alcohol. And so as this being in the conditions of approval, we all know that conditions of a CUP can be revoked if the conditions of approval are not being adhered to.
So does that also include pouring or mixing a drink?
Anyone that's gonna serve a drink.
Okay.
So if it's a bartender or a server, you know, sometimes you do go to restaurants where you see servers are the ones that are pouring drinks.
Right.
They may have a bartender also, but it's a sidebar and you will see the servers doing it. So they would be just as responsible for, for receiving that certificate as the bartender.
All right, great.
I think we should, excuse me, also point out, uh, one of the conditions of approval, and this is under, uh, ten general alcohol license requirements, C three, uh, requires bartender training and cocktail recipe list.
Okay.
So bartender shall be trained to properly build cocktails. At a minimum, bartender shall be trained to build the cocktails on the cocktail recipe list. And the establishment shall retain a copy of all cocktail recipes. So I think we should ask the applicant about acknowledging that condition of approval, cause it doesn't sound like it's about serving cocktails.
Yeah. In response, yes, I did see that. Under the C, training required. All persons who serve alcohol within the city shall comply with the following, the RBS. All, all servers are required to have the RBS. The verification, that's step two. And part three was bartender training and cocktail recipe list. The cocktail recipe list would be available, would be present once we, 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 we find, once we could establish like a list. We're not trying to be, uh, a restaurant that has like six hundred different cocktails. We just wanna probably choose the five best, um, cocktails that according to ChatGPT would provide for us. We're just trying to see. Yeah, the, the recipes would definitely be present. And the staff should record of each bartender's cocktail recipe, which would be evident since at the moment, we don't even have any, uh, bartenders. But if, once we do, if we do receive a CUP, we would definitely, we would definitely have that available.
Okay, thank you. Mark, did you have another question? Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay. Um, yeah, I did notice in there and I can't, Scott probably knows what number it is about no one that is serving drinking as well. Right?
I'm sorry?
What number is that? I saw that somewhere. That no one that is actually serving or bartending would be drinking on the premises.
Right, 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 right. No, yeah, definitely.
Okay. All right. And since there's no other questions, um, thank you. Mr. Gary, thank you. And do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and open up for a discussion for my colleagues before we have a motion.
I think Mr. Troy has been very responsible, um, having his beer and wine license for over twenty years. And he hasn't had any violation. Um, and I understand why he would like the, the wine, the, the spirit license. It's, um, very common for this type of restaurant to have a spirit license, so.
I, I agree. Um, there is one thing that I would, make me feel a lot more comfortable if the applicant installed an alarm system. Part of the issue you have with alcohol is not just what goes on in the restaurant when it's open, but particularly if you're gonna have some expensive alcohol for people to break in and steal the alcohol. And, um, you know, a ninety-dollar bottle of, uh, uh, bourbon could be, make it a target. And, um, I appreciate that he has cameras, which I think is good, but I would feel- And um, I appreciate that he has cameras, which I think is good, but I would feel more comfortable with an alarm system.
Mark, comments?
Well, I think, uh, yeah, Mr. Troy puts forward a pretty, uh, pretty convincing case, his background is, appears to be exemplary. He has no, uh, uh, no, no licensing violations. Um, I understand the profit motive, I'm in business, I understand that. And I certainly understand the, you know, the benefit of being able to sell out, sell distilled spirits. Um, one thing I, I probably should have asked staff or the applicant, but I wanna consider, I know that, um. I'm affiliated with some liquor licenses down in North San Diego County. We're required by, and uh, under the terms of our licenses, we're required to keep those, keep all, we have to have surveillance and we have to keep it for thirty days. So on our DVR backup, we're required to that, and we have to surrender that to any ABC agent or law enforcement officer on demand. And I, I don't know if staff is aware or, or knows or can tell us, do, do we know that if a forty-seven has that similar kind of a constraint or requirement? Sorry to throw you that curve, Matt.
Brandon, do you know, via code enforcement?
I don't recall any specific ABC requirement for out of the Riverside office for that.
Okay. I think, I think it's a statewide requirement, um, but, and I can see why they have it, I was just, I guess I just, I don't have familiarity with on sale licenses, so. Anyway, that's all I had, thank you.
Gary.
Yeah, Mr. Troy, um. Appreciate your openness and your, and your honest answers. I just, um, wanna emphasize that this commission. Expect when we approve or, if we're gonna approve something. That all the conditions of the approval are met. And uh, we have tried to send a message that if we approve something like that, we certainly expect each business to follow. Those conditions of approval, or if they don't, they're gonna come back and we're going to have to deal with that, so. I just think that needs to be said to everybody that comes before, is that we are really interested to make sure that if we're going to put conditions on you. We expect every one of them to be fulfilled. So, um, I echo what my colleagues have said on most everything here, so that's my thoughts.
All right, um, I do as well, especially with, um, just the things that we've expressed that we are concerned about to take those and. And, um, you know, we want you to be a good player, we want you to, you know, be. Like Gary said, if we're, if we end up voting on this, we expect you to live by those conditions. And, um, we have shut places down that don't. So, we don't wanna have to do that with anyone, so, just so that's really understood. All right, do we have a motion?
I, I would like to ask if others feel that a, a condition being an alarm system would be appropriate or not, so.
Thoughts?
Um, I, I think it'll be great for the business owner to also have, be protected also, so I, I think it's a, it's a condition that. It's not something acceptable.
I mean, I agree that it's probably in the business owner's best interest to have it, I don't know if we can mandate that or not, though, can we?
Um, I think we could probably ask the applicant, um, whether that is a condition that, um, he would be willing to add. And then, depending on that answer, we could discuss it further.
Is that something that you would be willing to add?
Um, if, if that's what it takes, I definitely would have been doing that, but. In my opinion. If someone came in and broke into that, 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 my establishment. And they say, let's say they, they had access to the cachet register, the percentage of. It wouldn't stop that person. Alarm system wouldn't stop that person. It would deter honest people, and I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind getting that alarm system. It's a, the response time is ten minutes, if that, that's the fastest time. We do have, we do have a, 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 a security that does cover around the Paradise. And half the time he does park in front of my, in, in our parking lot, so he has a clear eagle view of Paradise. Uh, 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 Paradise.
Chevrolet.
Chevrolet. He has a clear view of that, I mean, we can get it, I mean. If it was me, I wish we didn't have seventeen windows in front of my, in front of my store. At the restaurant, we had like twenty windows, if it was me, I wish I could have it all like. Concrete, metal doors, I don't know why we have all windows on every side. It goes, it's just, there's just, it's all, it's all windows, it's just all windows, it's all windows, and I don't know why.
White is great, natural light is great, okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Gary.
Do you know off the top or in your research if we've ever required that as a condition of approval?
We have not.
Yeah, I, I hesitate, Bob, um. I understand and I agree with the reasoning and the thought process, but I do have concerns about. Number one, establishing a precedent that we would probably have to follow. And two, I'm just, I'm just not so sure that, I agree sort of, do we have the right to mandate that on a business owner? So, I'm, I'm a little, not, not behind that at this point in time for those reasons.
Okay.
All right.
Can I, can I make a motion?
You can.
Can I make a motion as presented by staff to approve, um.
Type forty-seven.
Type forty-seven project, uh, type part seven license.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, um, by Fernando, a second by Mark, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried five zero, congratulations. Good luck. Thank you, thanks for being here tonight. Okay. We will move to item number four. Planning application numbers PA two four dash zero two three one, tentative track map to create six residential lots. From two existing parcels and PA two four dash zero two three zero. A development plan application for an approximately ten thousand five hundred and fifty square foot residential project comprised of two buildings. And six units located approximately two hundred feet north. Of the first and Pujol Street intersection, APNs nine two two dash zero six two dash zero one six. And nine two two dash zero six two dash zero one zero. And a density bonus application to approve certain concessions and waivers of development standards, Hyman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so as you stated, the Habitat for Humanity project consists of mainly two applications. One of them being PA twenty-four zero two three one, essentially a map to create the six parcels. The second application is PA twenty-four zero two three zero. A development plan for six units on the zero point four six acre parcel and a. Density bonus application to approve certain concessions and waivers of development standards. So on this aerial is a perspective of Old Town, on the far right of the large map, you'll see a red star. That's where we're presently located, then we see the Murida Creek traversing Old Town and on the lower side of the screen there. Is the project site highlighted in red. So, the project site is approximately two hundred feet north of the First Street and Pujol Street intersection. The APNs associated with this project is APN nine two two zero six two zero one zero and dash zero one six. Site consists of two lots totaling zero point four six acres. And as you can see, the project is just on the north of the existing Habitat for Humanity one, which is. Comprised of five affordable single family homes. So the project located by the red star there is in the Old Town Temecula specific plan. More specifically, the Neighborhood Residential District, also known as the NR District. The NR District is intended for attached and detached three-story residential development with a target density of. Twenty to thirty-five dwelling units to the acre. And being that this is an affordable project, you'll see in the later slides that. Many of those specific plan development standards will not be applicable to this project. And then, that's since they've applied for the waivers and concessions, which I'll get more into in the next slide. So, on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the applicant and the City of Temecula entered into a dispo. Disposition and development agreement or a DDA to ensure that six units are sold. And, um, are intended for owner occupancy at a cost affordable to households of low and very low income. And pursuant to California Government Code Section six five nine one five and our state compliant Temecula Municipal Code. This allows projects that are utilizing the density bonus law to also request unlimited waivers of development standards. The applicant is using the density bonus law for waivers to development standards of the Old Town Temecula specific plan. And the applicant is not using density bonus law for additional units or increased density. So the project is proposing, again, a hundred affor- a hundred percent affordable units, therefore it is entitled to unlimited waivers of development standards. Per the density bonus law I covered on the previous slides. The applicant has requested waivers and concessions on the following development standards, which include minimum lot width. Minimum lot area, reduction on side yard setbacks, staggered build-to line. Modification to tree grate requirements, modifications to Pujol Street right-of-way. A reduction of required density and a reduction of the required number of stories. And before we proceed with the development plan, I also wanted to present the tentative track map. So this project intends to remap the two zero point two three acre parcels into six lots. The lots themselves will range in size from about twenty-five hundred square feet to thirty-five hundred square feet. And each lot establishes a boundary for each independent unit. And here in the site plan, you'll see again that the project is again just north of the existing Habitat for Humanity one. This is Habitat for Humanity two. And we have a vehicular ride-in and ride-out from Pujol Street. There we see the pedestrian access from the sidewalk and then throughout the site. Again, six residential units, that's split between two buildings with three single attached residential units each. And a total of twelve garage parking spaces, two per unit. So now moving on to the floor plans, units range from about seventeen hundred square feet to eighteen hundred square feet. The floor plans feature two stories, stooped entryways and porches, two vehicle parking spaces in the form of a garage. Over a hundred square feet of private open space, shown as porches, landscaped driveways. On the first floor, you'll find is where the garages are located, the kitchen and dining areas, living room. And restroom. And on the second floor, we'll have the three bedrooms, which includes a primary bedroom plus the walk-in closet. Two bathrooms and washer dryer facility. Now moving on to architecture, the Old Town specific plan allows for a developer to choose from a multiple, multitude of styles. With architecture, um, such as mercantile, neoclassical, Spanish, and of course what you have here, craftsmen. So on this page, I have displayed the four sides of the proposed building elevations. Since both the buildings proposed are identical, I am only showing on this slide one of the buildings. So now as you look at the building elevations, you will notice the required following characteristics are included on all sides. And some of the main design elements of this style include a gable roof. Two-foot deep foot, two-foot deep roof overhangs, excuse me. Exposed structural elements such as rafters and brackets. And prominent front porches with expressive wood and timber construction techniques. And a mixture of exterior materials including wood, stucco, siding and roof shingles. Now on this slide, I'll highlight the colors that further complement that craftsman design. So starting with the exterior stucco is taupe. Trims and eaves are green. Burgundy entry doors. Cool midnight roofing shingles. Beige lap siding and white columns. And now here we have the three D renderings that were provided by the applicant, top left image is a view from Pujol Street. The top right image is the interior facade view from lot four. Lower left image there highlights the perspective view as you would see it sort of from the intersection angle. Looking down, and then lastly, uh, the, the last image there on the bottom right shows the interior view with the driveways and the garages. And on this landscaping plan, you'll see the design theory behind the landscaping was intended to essentially soften the hardscape. Screen any mechanical equipment, enhance the architecture, of course. Buffer, site perimeter, walkways, entryways, driveways. And then for typical plantings on, as, as it goes for trees. Fruitless olives and pink chitalpa and London plane. For shrubs, we have red yucca, a lot of kangaroo paw and bottle brush. And then the site is twenty-two percent landscaped. So from an environmental standpoint, the project is in accordance with SEQA. And the project is also categorically exempt from further environmental review per section one five three three two. As this is an infill development project. So before I do a recommendation, we have a few edits to the conditions of approval. We did get these COAs over to the applicant, they had a few edits that they wanted us to work on and staff agreed, so. That's what we'll go over in the next slides, COA number forty-two, wall and fence plans. Don't expect you to read the entire thing, but essentially, we tapered it down to read. COA number forty-two, wall and fence plans, wall and fence plans shall be consistent with the approved entitlement, entitlement plans, excuse me. And then the second revision is a rectification to the. Condition of approval number fifty-three for the development plan and condition of approval number eight on the tentative track map. Which, as it relates to Quimby requirements, so it will be substituted with what you see here in red. To read as zero point zero nine acres of parkland and twenty-six thousand dollars. Twenty-six thousand five hundred and five dollars in Quimby fees. And then on this slide, I'm showing the COAs that are actually being removed. And the applicant requested they, these be removed since the verbiage applies to water quality requirements. Specifically for sites that are larger than one acre, so as such, COA number seventy on the development plan. And COA number forty-seven on the tentative track map does not apply and will be eliminated. So with that, staff recommends the planning commission approved PA twenty-four zero two three one tentative track map. And PA twenty-four zero two three zero, the development plan, along with the density bonus application and its waivers and concessions. Subject to the revised conditions of approval, that concludes my presentation, staff is here to answer any questions. As is the applicant Tammy Marine, uh, representing Habitat for Humanity and her team.
Hey, thank you, Hyman, I'm gonna start, Gary, any questions of staff?
Yeah, I mean, down the road, um. Those, uh, the components of three units and then three units, that's one building, two, times two, right? Um, down the road ten, fifteen years, if it needs painting. Does the individual homeowner for one of those three units have the right to paint whatever they want? Are there conditions on what that would be, does the whole? Are there conditions on what that would be? Does the whole unit have to be painted the same way, that type of thing? Do you understand where I'm going with that?
I do. Seems like your concern is regarding maintenance. So we do have conditions of approval, municipal code that covers that, and we have CCNRs that will be covering that as well.
So I'm just curious how that works, if you have three separate homeowners in one building and one of them decides that they need to do some ongoing maintenance, which we all do, and the other two don't agree with something like that, how does that work out?
Yeah, I can defer that to Tammy Marine. She is more familiar with the procedures and maintenance of these types of facilities.
Okay, yeah, I like what I see, the design and the colors and everything, but I would be very, very concerned that we maintain that through the life of the project. So maybe the applicant can address that concern.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to visit the site yesterday. I didn't go on it, but I parked across the street from it. I want to ask, Jaime, do you know, can you say, have those lots ever been developed?
The two in question, no.
They have not, yeah. And also, what is that? Those are composition shingle, what is that, like a three-tab shingle or an architectural shingle, or do we know?
Are you referring to the roof?
Yes, sir.
It is asphalt comp shingle. We have a material sample board.
Okay. I'm just curious about the quality of what they're installing, whether it was a basic three-tab or architectural. Will they be forming a homeowners association?
Not sure on that one. Eric, can you weigh in?
Yeah, there, whenever we process a map, we have requirements for CCNRs and HOA. There's conditions of approval in there to take care of those common areas. They're individually owned, but when you look at the lot lines, they go out into the middle of that street, if you will. So that right there is even a common area. So we have, we do have that in place to take care of those types of issues as time goes on, to make sure that all the common stuff like that is taken care of.
Seems like if they elect three officers in six units.
Yeah, it'll be a very small one, but nonetheless, it's there. Yeah, it's there to make sure common area stuff is taken care of, not destroyed or left abandoned or turned into blight. You're welcome.
Okay, Bob?
Jaime, could you go back to the slide that had the waivers on it? I think it was towards the beginning. What is the modifications to Pujo Street right of way? What would that waiver be?
So the Old Town Temecula specific plan has standard sidewalks, tree grates, things like that that are required. So the way the code is specified, buildings should be constructed is you have the, you have the build to line where the building must be built to. Not exactly a setback, but it says the building must be there. From the building in front of it, we have a 10-foot separation, so that's the build to line. And then from that point forward, we have the furnishing zone, we have sidewalks. All of that amounts to a total of 20 feet. So on the public right-of-way side is a 10-foot area. And so what they're requesting is a small reduction to, from 10 feet to 9.66 feet.
Would the street itself be dedicated?
You're talking about the street that provides access to the garages, that little? No, that's gonna be private, that we're not, we're not taking that.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
Fernando?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. How long has this other project next door been? How long has it been constructed?
Not sure on that one. We can defer that to the applicant as well.
Okay, and because this is, I'm guessing they're gonna be one HOA, is it gonna be one HOA?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
So then the road, this private road would be owned by all the properties in that cul-de-sac, you could say, right?
Depending on where you're referring to, if you're speaking on the access drive vials that leads to the driveways, yes.
Can you, can you pull out the plan? I'm looking at, I kind of printed it out.
Okay.
Like this one, it's like the site plan that shows the the private street and then the other private street. I think they're both named the same. So my question is, who will be maintaining that private street that says private? Is it just gonna be this, these six new developments, or is it for the entire community?
We're getting into territory that was a contract between the City of Temecula and the DDA.
Okay.
A lot of that language was covered and it's typically addressed. So Matt, you wanna weigh in on that?
Yeah, I think we're gonna want the applicant to speak to the maintenance and also the ownership structure.
Okay.
Because these units will be sold to individual families.
Right.
But then Habitat maintains the overall property ownership. It's a limited equity model for the residents. And then Habitat maintains the ownership of the property and also maintains it, but I'll let Tammy speak to that.
I think my concern is the improvements of the street and how it is today. And if the property, the street is maintained the way it is today, then I'm worried about how it would be maintained in 20 years because it's such a big private driveway. And that's my only concern. And my other question is, I don't see like a trash enclosure area. Is there just individual trashcans?
Correct. So we have the minimum 20 by 20 garage spaces that accommodate the two vehicles in the garage. And if, I'll zoom in here so you could see the trash bins are actually contained inside of each of the garage units.
Okay, and that, if you can go to the, kind of to the street, that porch, are they asking for a waiver because the porch is extending into that, that built to line?
Correct. That's the staggering line waiver.
Staggering line waiver. Okay, and then the AC units?
Their location, we have it. You could barely see my cursor here, but we have units contained here on the end of the building.
Okay.
To my understanding, we have one here, we have another one here that services these two. And then this one services these two, and then we have an additional one here with landscaping around it as well.
I have a concern with that. Then how is, you would have to?
They're architecturally integrated with trellis boxes and landscaping around it. I can go to a rendering if you'd like.
My only concern is how the condensation line would be going through one house to get to the other house. That'd be my only concern, just.
Yeah, so legitimate concern, we'll be covering that in the construction plan check.
Then how would the condensing unit connect to the?
There's refrigerant lines that would be routed through the structure, but the condensate does not route from the condensing unit.
So then to like, maybe like in the future for maintenance purposes, you would have to go, how would you?
Refrigerant lines very seldom need to be replaced unless there's some sort of mechanical impact or damage to them. There's not, it's not common for those to have to be replaced under normal maintenance conditions.
Okay, that's it?
If I may step in, there's a question about when the original Habitat project was built. Our records indicate that some of the buildings were completed in 2008, to answer the planning commission's question.
2008, thank you. That's it.
Bob, did you have anything? Okay, yeah, Jaime, can you go back to the amendments at the very end of the changes that you made in the conditions of approval?
Yes.
I just wanted to look at those again. I did have my little trusty thing up while I was trying to find it while you were doing it, so I wanna just make sure on those. Was the first one number 42? The wall and fence plans, I think? Yeah.
There we go.
So the, so the change on that is what? Just the wall and fence plan shall be consistent with the approved entitlement plans?
We have a standard condition of approval that is applied to most projects. And so when they looked at this language, they found language that doesn't really, it's not compatible with the project, including language that talks about wood fencing shall be used for all side and rear yard fencing. Here in this project, they're not using wood fencing, they're using block walls, so that doesn't apply.
Okay, and then, then, what's the next one?
Next one is number cleanup, so that we're more accurate with the Quimby fees.
Okay, and then next?
And the last one is eliminating these
Right.
COAs since they don't apply as it relates to water quality and pollutants for sites larger than one acre.
Okay, all right, that's all I had. I do have some questions for the applicant, and I think we all do, so any other questions for staff? No, hearing none. Are there any public comments?
We have none.
Okay, actually, I'm opening that public hearing before I ask that question. Can we have the applicant come up, please? Hi, Tammy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairperson, commissioners, and staff. My name is Tammy Marine. I'm the CEO and President of Habitat for Humanity Inland Valley. As you likely know, we are a nonprofit affordable housing developer tasked at facilitating the dream of homeownership and improving living conditions for low-income families in the community. Thank you so much for having the opportunity for us to be here tonight. I am accompanied by our team, so when you ask your questions, I'm gonna be able to refer to them on some of the more detailed questions. But with me is Mary Stein, our CFO and Director of Programs. Also from our civil, we have Rachel Lutu and Alex Paulson. And then Roy Arsell is our architect that's with us as well. I just want to say we're so grateful for the consideration of the project tonight. We refer to it, as I think was mentioned, as Habitat Way 2. This six-house project was always planned to be the second phase of a neighborhood that we completed successfully back in 2008 in partnership with the city. This project is funded in part by the city through, also through Habitat for Humanity and also the county, so. And it will create those six new homes for six hard-working families that fall either under 80 or 50% of the area median income. Our program helps families achieve long-term financial stability. And as illustrated by Phase 1 of this project, still the original families are in these homes, back from 2008, by the way. These families take pride in homeownership and have thrived in a multitude of ways. The project also supports the city in meeting its RENA numbers by serving these families. And more importantly, this project sends a loud message about the city's continued investment in the area of affordable housing and community development. We are deeply grateful for your partnership and for considering the project tonight. Together, we're not building homes, we're building stability, opportunity, and hope. And I just thank you so much in advance for your consideration, and I'm here and I'll bring up others as you have those detailed questions.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, Mark, do you have any questions of Tammy?
Only briefly. I, you know, I'm familiar with your organization and the good work you do. And, but I don't know that I have, I still have a question. When you say that the city and county contribute to the development of these properties, do either of those recapture any of the profits on the sale?
That's done through Habitat, actually. So what happens is that we sell the properties to, at affordable price to the homeowners. But there's a silent second, which is the difference between the fair market value and the subsidy in essence. And so when those monies are recaptured, because Habitat is not only an affordable housing developer, but we're also a mortgage holder. And so when those dollars come back, we reinvest those in future projects.
Okay, that was my next question, actually. One of, it was asking if Habitat for Humanity, do you carry mortgages, mortgage paper?
Yes.
You are, okay. Is that at a subsidized mortgage rate?
No, it's a no-interest loan.
Oh, it's a no-interest loan?
Yeah, it's a no-interest loan.
Okay, what's the price point for this product?
Well, that'll, we'll have to determine that once we get the appraisal and do that kind of work, but we're thinking. Pardon me? I could get you that number, but I can't get it to you now because of the original budget and then with what's happened with inflation. And then we'll also have to do some appraisals, so we'll have to determine what that number is. But I could definitely get that to you as we get further down the project.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you for that. And then the last question I want to ask is, you know, when I, when I look at Section 4 of our land use plan here, it's specifically talking about our Old Town specific plan, intended to provide for attached and detached three-story residential developments with a density of 20 to 25 dwelling units per acre. But this project is delivering what looks like a two-story, which is two-story duplexes with an approximate density of 13 units per acre. Any reason, any reason you didn't go three stories on these or use more of what's available?
Well, it's primarily because there are homeownership opportunities, and so that's different than affordable rental. And, and we believe that that's a really needed product in today's market in the affordable housing crisis because it really literally helps families stabilize long-term and get out of subsidy once they get into a Habitat home.
Very good. Thank you.
Gary?
Yeah, could you address my earlier concerns on the maintenance?
Oh, so what Habitat does is have a maintenance agreement, and we also will have the CCNRs. We're doing research on the HOA, and we'll be working with the city to determine what that looks like for this particular project. But as in Habitat Way 1 as an example, we had a maintenance agreement with the five homeowners there. And to answer your question about the private street, we had a portion of their payment comes back to us in a street fund, maintenance fund that's housed at Habitat. So we'll be looking at what the best use is once we determine whether there needs to be an HOA. And it will also be embedded into the maintenance agreement, and that's the same with the paint as well. We, I will say, and I know, I know you're not gonna, we don't structure it based on, Habitat's a nonprofit organization, so it's very concerning to us what our properties look like. So last year, as an example, we painted Habitat Way 1 and supported those homeowners in that way because we, we know that all of our homes are a billboard in essence for supporting affordable housing and what we're doing at Habitat for Humanity. So we stay actively involved with the homeowners long-term.
Good, because we don't want, you know, things going downhill. And you said that the original Habitat 1, was it?
Mm-hmm.
All the original owners are still there?
Yes, all the original owners are still there. I wish you would have been at one of the city council meetings I did last year where I talked about the data, the successes that have happened with the families, including out of 16 children, 14 got through college, two actually got a master's degree in cybersecurity. That, those two individuals were from a Spanish-speaking family, by the way. So the mentorship, the education, the way we wrap ourselves around the family is holistic in nature. It's not just designed to put them in a house and then walk away. We, we know that Habitat is a paradigm shift in the way that families look at their lives and what they can achieve in homeownership. And so we walk alongside them long-term to ensure they're successful.
And when a person or a family is selected to purchase the house. I don't know where I was gonna go with that, but.
Do you want to know how they get picked?
Well, I do. I don't want to go into a, you know, a dictionary-length explanation on that, but I am curious how your selection process goes.
Okay.
Besides low income.
I'll try to keep it concise. So we pick on three criteria, and that is need, the willingness to partner with us, because they do sweat equity, which cuts down their down payment significantly, and then their ability to pay, because they buy the home from us, this isn't a giveaway program. And the application process is really critical, especially to the five or the six potential homeowners, but also to the community at large, because many people go through the application process, only six actually get the homes, but many, many families are educated on their financial situation, next steps they need to get into, how maybe they can get into homeownership in another way. And so there's a lot of curtsy benefits that come out of just our process alone. And then we have a, a family selection committee that serves and very diligently determines the family with the best need, that would be the most successful family for each home. So it's a pretty sophisticated process. I'm really proud to say in all the years that our affiliate has been established since nineteen ninety-one, we've never had a foreclosure, and that's an incredible accomplishment, I think. The Habitat Network US-wide has only had a two percent foreclosure rate, our affiliate here locally hasn't had any to date. So, you know, it, it is much different than when you are subsidized or get something and then the entity walks away. We stick with the family, we're not intrusive, but we're, we're out there and we're supporting them, we're encouraging them to do additional education. We, I don't know if you know, but we have a real estate and education center that offers classes all year round, not only for potential applicants, but also the community at large, and for our homeowners, giving them additional information on next steps in their own lives. So it's a very comprehensive program that we put together, I'm really proud of it. And I would invite you, if you ever had, were interested or want the opportunity to come and kind of tour what we're doing and, and check it out at that level. I think you'd be proud of it.
If, if one of your homeowners moves in and, hope it doesn't happen, but ten years from now they decide to, they want to move? How does that process work? So if, let's just, for sake of argument, they paid fifty thousand dollars originally, and now ten years later they want to sell it for a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, okay.
It's probably like a million more, but anyhow, we'll just use those two figures as an example.
Yeah, so, so let me first say that it is, it is critical that we really look at our program in, in terms of what's the best use of the dollars and how it supports the family, but also our future programming. And, but every transaction, transaction has been a tiny bit different, depending on where the funding sources are. But the way that things are structured, for the most part, is that they buy the house, the house is listed at fair market value, but they pay what they can afford. And then it's protected with a silent second. The silent second, like I mentioned, is the difference between fair market value and what they can afford. And that silent second, in most cases, in, with these houses for sure, sticks with the house forevermore. So if they sell the house, Habitat gets the first right of refusal. So we get the first opportunity to buy the home back, and when we buy the home back, we buy it back affordability factor based on what another low-income family could, could afford, if that makes sense. So in essence, say, it's complicated, but if a family had been in a house for five years, they wouldn't gain the, the fair market equity that a regular transaction would. But what they would gain is the differential between the area median income as it goes up with inflation each year. So they would get a portion of what, of what those dollars are. So it is, it's not like a traditional homeownership opportunity, but there is a net gain in that way, and of course, they can pay the house off. And if the house is inheritable to their, to their family, and they're able to, to achieve the American dream. We had two other houses we did in Temecula on Sixth Street, and those two are the original owners, and those were built in two thousand two. These families likely would have had no opportunity for homeownership, they're financially stable, and they're so proud of the work that they've done to move into the house, that it's very rare that they want to move out, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Bob?
So my, well, first of all, thank you for what you do. We really, really appreciate Habitat, and we're very pleased and thankful that you're in town here, so.
Thank you.
My interest is in the maintenance.
Yeah.
And to follow up with Gary's questions, is, first of all, the, you have a maintenance agreement, is that maintenance agreement? Is it Habitat that oversees that, or is it the HOA that oversees that? So if something needs to be enforced, would it be enforced by Habitat or by the HOA?
So I can't answer that question specifically yet with this project. I think that Eric might, might say that we're going to need an HOA, right?
Yeah, that's how the product is conditioned, but we also, as they've mentioned, they do have their maintenance agreement where they stay on top of things with the homeowner. So maintenance doesn't.
Could, would, would combining this group with the other, I guess, is it other, one or other two groups of homes that are there? If combining that into one HOA, would that be something that's possible?
So the first five don't have an HOA.
They don't.
And there was, there was some language that we were looking at that, for affordable housing, that we were hopeful that we didn't have to have an HOA, and I, and I'm talking about the cost. So Habitat's always going to be concerned about what things look like, that's a given, and, and we stand by that. But we're also concerned about the cost. So we'll be looking into that. I think that staff are, are directing us for, that we'll have to set up an HOA, and if that's what we have to do, that's what we'll do.
But you're, the agree, the agreement regarding maintenance of the property is actually with Habitat, right?
Yes.
So you, if, if it needed to be enforced, you would be enforcing it then?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And we have a system where we routinely visit the homeowners, we check things out, we try and, you know, the one thing I want to impress is that we're trying to help families to become independent and self-sufficient. And so we're trying not to micromanage, but at the same time, if a house is in a huge state of disrepair, we're not gonna not say anything.
Right.
And, and that's part of the homeowner agreement, that they agree to these conditions in order to be accepted into our program.
Yeah, because if the house comes dilapidated, it comes back, I mean, it hurts you too, hurts, hurts the nonprofits.
Right, like I, like I said, every house is a billboard for Habitat Humanity, so it's really critical to us that our community, the homeowners, the neighborhood at large is really proud of the work that we do.
Thank you.
If I can add too, from the city's perspective, I've never had a developer call the city up and say, hey, it's been a little while since our units have been painted, what would you like painted, except for Habitat for Humanity? Tammy called me last year and said, hey, we've got a bunch of volunteers, we want to do something good in the community, and they said, we're gonna come out and paint homes this weekend, which, do you see anything else that you think the city needs to have done on these projects? She called us, we didn't call them. So that's usually a good sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and it goes without saying that we're a partner with you in this project, and so we know that whatever we do reflects on the city as well, and we take that very serious.
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify too, there's a condition of approval that will require CCNRs, but there's also a regulatory agreement associated with this project because of the affordability factor, and I think through both of those, there could be, there will be a, a maintenance requirement.
I think, I think that answers my question, but it doesn't answer my question, because I think my only concern is the improvement of the Habitat Way as an entirety. I think some of the, the private way does need maintenance, and my only concern is when, is there something documented that says, when does it get maintenance? It's such a big, it's a big cost to maintain a street.
Yeah.
But now that there's gonna be six new units.
That's a, that's a really critical point. And so Habitat Way One, we're gonna have to structure it a little bit different than we did, because I think the way we structured Habitat Way One is, is not acceptable for this project. But what we did with that is we recaptured out of every payment a small amount that's in a fund, so we can slurry seal and main, maintenance that street, since it is a private street. So I can't tell you exactly what that mechanism will be exactly, maybe Eric can give me a little bit direction, but I will tell you what will, it will be addressed, either through the HOA or the CCNRs.
Right. How about if this project goes forward, is that a condition of approval to re-slurry the entire Habitat Drive?
No, this pro, this planning application is only for the product you're seeing before you. If the existing Habitat project needs some work done on the streets or not, that's a whole separate project, and we can certainly look at that and see if, if there needs to be repairs, then we'll work with Habitat to make sure those repairs are made.
Yeah, I think.
But it's a separate project.
Yeah, I think the street is cracked, and there's a pothole, I think.
Oh, they're in, okay, thank you for letting me know.
I just drove by today.
Yeah, we have about, what do we have, Mary, do you remember how much it's set aside? Is it ten? I think it's around ten thousand we've collected so far for maintenance on that street, so I appreciate you bringing that up, because we'll give that a look and see what we need to do on Habitat Way One.
Okay, and I think that's it. That's my concern.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you for being here. We, I, you know, I was thinking, every time I see a Habitat home, it looks so nice.
Oh, thank you.
You know, and so I don't have a worry about that, you know, about them not looking nice, because all of the ones I've seen, they look nice, yeah, you can just tell that they are Habitat homes. I am a color person, so I am gonna say something.
Yeah.
Just the entry door being burgundy, like, I wish that would, if there was a way to change that, I would, that's something that I think would be good, but I do, like I said, I like how they all look, and I went out there also, and I think that fits for right there. You know, like you said, completing that neighborhood, and I think the fact that, you said that those same owners are there in those other six homes, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Like, that really, really says a lot, that they have been able to stay there, and really that goal, right, that you have as Habitat, having that happen is happening. And so I think that's very impressive, and I didn't know that about that, so I think that that means a lot to me, I think that's really important. And I appreciate all the questions that my colleagues have, have asked, and are there any other questions?
Just one.
Mark has another question.
Okay.
Just one. As the mortgageor, and he's, I noticed you mentioned.
Pardon me, what'd you say?
As the mortgageor, as a mortgage holder?
Okay, yeah.
You mentioned also that you come back, and as evidenced by city staff, as, as supported by city staff as well, and keep tabs on things and monitor, making sure the appearance is good. Does, does your position, does your first position in the Detertrust, is that entitled to you to a right of entry to also inspect the inside of the home?
No.
Oh, so there's no inside inspections?
Well, so what, what we do, I, I can't emphasize this enough, what we do with our Habitat families is we build a relationship. And so when we come visit, so we go at Christmas time, actually, and we take gifts and, you know, things for the homeowner, but it's also to give kind of a visual look at kind of what's going on. And in most cases, the family invites us in, because we stay connected with them. It's not a one-stop-and-done, we're, we're connected all the time. And so I don't believe that we have the right to go inside of the home if we weren't invited to do so, because they are independent homeowners. But I will tell you, and I've never had a case where they didn't welcome us, because they're so grateful for the opportunity they got, for the continual communication. We have a Director of Family Services that stays connected all the time, and they're very engaged. So as an example, this is a little thing, but it's kind of a big thing, when Altaire went up, they had some questions, how's that gonna affect us? Are we gonna have dust? Is it gonna be loud? What, how long's the construction? We called a meeting at the Real Estate Center, they all showed up, we had Altaire there, we sat and had conversations, answered all their questions. This is typical Habitat in how we deal with them, it's a relationship, not just a transaction.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And no public comments, correct? Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and any discussion from my colleagues before a motion is made?
I, I think my concern is only the improvement of the street, and when it gets, when it gets improved.
And that's something separate, though, from tonight?
Well, you have to drive through this private lane to get to the back of here, so that's why it's a concern for me. Because it's, I'm sure there's some type of document saying that there's a easement or some type of access that these owners are responsible for, for the Habitat Way.
Commissioners, the least, what we can do is note your concern and make sure we address it in the CCNRs.
Okay.
Bob, comments?
I think it's a great project, I love the architecture, so the architect, you did a great job, appreciate it, and I'm fully in support of, of the project, so.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah, I'll echo Gary's, Bob's sentiments, I mean, I'm in favor of the project, I just, by way of a sideline comment, I guess I would just say that it's, sometimes it feels to me a little disappointing that, you know, so much of what we hear, and certainly so much of what we reply with, is largely moot based on Sacramento, what is it, SB three thirty? I mean, it's all academic, I think, at this point, we don't really have a lot of input into this, all of the development standards are waived, so I'm not really sure, I mean, I am sure why we're hearing the matter, but it's just, it's discouraging to be here in that capacity when, when we all know it's a foregone conclusion, we're not gonna make any changes to this thing, Sacramento drives that, so that's my comment.
Gary?
You need to talk to our politicians in Sacramento and say, do something about affordable housing, because everything they say doesn't work. And the things that they're passing now are just knee-jerk reactions that are unbelievable, and they're just gonna end up being detrimental to every community, in my opinion. So I appreciate what you brought, it's a good project, you've alleviated a lot of my concerns, thank you for explaining that, you were very prepared, had the right answers, and I appreciate that very much. Now, just get on the Sacramento people and tell them to start dealing with issues that matter, instead of the garbage they deal with on a daily basis these days. Thank you.
All right. I think also that it fits for that area, obviously, and other than the burgundy door, I'm happy with the project, and, and I'm glad that my colleagues have asked about maintenance, I think that's really important. And also, the road that Fernando has talked about, I'm looking into that, so, but thank you so much for your preparation and being here and for all you do, because I, I think as far as nonprofits, it's a great one, they're not all great, but this is, this, from what I can tell, what I know about it, is a wonderful nonprofit to be able to give ownership to people who wouldn't otherwise be able to get ownership, that's huge. So thank you. Do we have a motion?
A move that we approve PA twenty-four oh two three oh and PA twenty-four oh two three one.
Second?
Can we just make a statement with the revised conditions?
With the revised conditions, a second.
Okay, all right, we have a, we have a motion and a second, motion by Bob Hagel and a second by Fernando. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, congratulations, yay! Five to zero, awesome. Okay, let's see, and item number five. Oh yeah, I need to read it. Oh, yeah, I need to read it. I knew that. I'm like, why is everybody waiting? They're waiting for me. Okay, perfect. Planning application number PA 25-0137. A modification application for the review and consideration by the Planning Commission of the as-built gray color scheme of 13 of Temecula Town Center's buildings. APNs 921, 320, 012, 018, 021, 038, 041, 048, 052, and 919, 430, 012. Jaime?
Just wanted to let you know, the Planning Commission, that the applicant emailed us this afternoon to cancel. They're not able to attend the hearing, so we're going to continue to a date certain, the next Planning Commission, October 1st.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to continue.
All right, can we get a motion on that?
Motion to continue item to the next Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just note that Gary is away, so four, zero.
Yes, to continue to October 1st.
To continue to October 1st. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jaime. And, all right. Do we have any Commissioner reports? I'll start over here. You have a baby out there. It's so cute, and you look so tired.
Yes. Thank you for telling me I looked tired. But no reports.
No reports. Okay, Bob?
Actually, the two of us attended basically a workshop up in, what, Eastville? Eastville.
Eastville for a Planning Commission workshop.
Yeah. And one of the things that may impact everybody here is that the regional APA is going to try to have a lot more of them here so that we don't have to always depend upon going to the big APA conference so that we would have more stuff located within the region, within Western Riverside County. It was very well attended. I don't think there was a seat available. And we got to meet, you know, a lot of our other commissioners in the area. Some of them I've met a number of times and gotten to know them very well. And we also had a planning director who is in Wildamar, who is there for like a nine-month thing. He's on a contract. And he would love to come in and take a look at Temecula. I've given Matt his name and everything. And he is, he spends a lot of time in Temecula, so he has a lot of appreciation for what we've done. But we have a lot, you know, a great opportunity to really talk with everybody and.
Was there anything new? Like, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like we hear a lot of the same things.
Yeah, one of the things, housing is certainly a big thing in all the community around us. Apartments, Murrieta is getting way, way more apartments than we are here. But one of the things that strikes me in talking to all the different cities is how different their issues are. And, you know, some of them are fairly new cities that are, you know, and they're within 10 years of being formed and how difficult that can be for that first five to 10 years. Wildamar is certainly in that position. Menifee is. And Paris is going through a very large growth period and struggling with some things, particularly in the area of getting, had to laugh. Some of the things that we used to go through with asking businesses if they would open up restaurants or stores there, they're going through the same thing and not getting the attention that, you know, that they would like. But it's interesting to hear the various different issues and how they approach them. And it always reminds me of how good it is that we have it here, so.
Thank you. Thanks for that report. Gary, anything?
I won't be at the next meeting.
Thanks for letting us know.
Some bad news, the day I was before I came, five police officers were shot in Pennsylvania this afternoon, and three of them died.
Oh, my gosh.
And that's five families that have been torn apart by violence. And I just continue to be disgusted with the disrespect for law enforcement that seems to be prevalent out there. And once again, I'll emphasize that every one of these cops that protect us do so willingly. They leave their family and their house in the morning, and their family doesn't know if they're going to come back again. And we forget about it two days later. So in your thoughts, think about the poor families that are left behind from some idiot that decided to take somebody's life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Only to say that I had the distinct pleasure of attending the last city council meeting, and it's always good to see good governance in action front row.
Thank you. I was able to go to the CIP workshop, which was valuable to be there and ended up being about a three-and-a-half-hour meeting. But that was, I think, a week or so ago, September 2nd. So a lot of good information there on projects that they are going to move forward and prioritize. So if you have a chance to listen to that, I think it'd be a good idea as Planning Commissioners to know what they have prioritized. So, all right. Do we have any subcommittee reports at this time? Anybody? And Matt?
Just wanted to inform the Planning Commission that on Tuesday, the 23rd, at the city council meeting, they'll be appointing the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I'll be presenting the Community Outreach Plan for that effort. Hopefully, you receive the card in the mail that talks about the general plan update. There's a QR code that'll take you to the website. On the website, there's a calendar that talks about these visioning workshops. And you're welcome to attend those. We're planning to do one in each council member's district. So the first one on the 24th will be at the MRC. That's Councilmember Schwenks. On the second, it'll be at the Library and Pava. That's Councilmember Kelfus's district. On the sixth, we'll be at the Vale Headquarters. That's Alexander's district. On the 7th of October, we'll be at Meadowview, which is Councilmember Stu's district. And then on the eighth, we'll be at Hawks Point and Red Hawk. So those are drop-in events. You can stop in, spend five minutes or a couple hours, depending on your interest. And then that Community Outreach Plan, we'll be bringing that on October 1st. So you can take a look at that and provide input as well.
Can you say with that 10:08 meeting, what time of day is that?
They start at 6:00.
Okay.
And the Community Outreach Plan, you're bringing it to this meeting on October 1st?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And I noticed that we're saving the date for October 16th for a ride around town? True?
That's our van tour. That's correct. And Eric Jones, who's organizing that, is here. Any details, Eric, the starting time?
It's going to start at 8:00. We have it scheduled from 8:00 to 1:00 that day. And I'm putting together the different sites we're going to go to. So I'm working on that right now. 8:00 to 1:00, 8:00 AM to 1:00.
Okay, all right. Let's see, Public Works, Mr. Ron?
Lou. So don't really have a Public Works report tonight. All of our projects are ongoing, so if you have any questions about any of those, but nothing new to report lately, except for the fact that I was able to attend with City Manager's Office, which included Aaron, Luke, Betsy. We went to, and the mayor, Brendan Kelfus. We went back to Washington DC. We just got back. And we had very successful meetings with our congressmen's as well as the senators. So it was very successful, and I'm sure there'll be a report by our city manager this Tuesday at the next council meeting.
For the record, when you say you just got back, what do you mean by that?
Right before this meeting.
Right before this meeting. You came from Washington.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here. We like having you here.
Thank you.
Don't leave us. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. And would like to adjourn in memory of all those families, of the police officers and also Charlie Kirk's family at this time. So many people devastated, right? And could use our prayers. So thank you to everyone for being here, and we've missed seeing you guys. So we'll be adjourned until October 1st. Thank you.